You leave me, I'm gonna either kill you or I'm gonna kill your family.
I remember one time he came and jumped on the second, I lived on the second floor, jumped on it, got into my apartment, jumped on the second floor balcony, broke down my door with his bare body, it had been locked and everything, broke, knew what car I drove, and so ended up breaking the back window with a brick.
Daisy finally left her pimp boyfriend after an arrest for prostitution got her into a diversion program. Through the help of groups like Journey Out, she got safe housing, career guidance, and counseling. But her story highlights how easy it can be for a young woman, any young woman, to fall victim to a sex trafficker.
So often people would say, "Well, that would never happen to me," or "That would never happen to my daughter." The average entry age for human trafficking is between the ages of 12 and 14 years old.
Lieutenant Mark Evans of the LAPD makes it his business to know how these predators manipulate their victims as he chases them down in the streets.
The reason they move from location to location is so that they can avoid, they can help prevent the girls from, from developing relationships, developing mentors, developing friendships that they could go to, to help them escape.
He renamed them. So, your name could have been Stephanie, but now your name is Chocolate. So, for some of them, they start to identify more with Chocolate.
Daisy was lucky. She reclaimed her identity. She now teaches empowerment groups and serves as a mentor to other sex trafficking survivors.
I can see every day the work that I'm doing and how it matters. They can create such a beautiful, beautiful, amazing life for themselves every day that they could just be happy because they have that choice. And I want to give women those choices.
It may take some victims years to get out of the life. It may take them six or seven false starts, but 66% of those who make it through this program never return to sex trafficking again. Instead of arresting the women, law enforcement officers now send those who want it to diversion programs that give them a fresh start. Some cases are harder than others.
A girl that's been in from age 13, now she's 23. And she has a long arrest record. And she has her pimp's name tattooed all over her face. As much as she wants to get out and will get out, takes a long time.
In spite of the challenges around here, helping women find the self-respect they've lost is turning lives around. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. The Journey Out drop-in center serves about 250 sex-trafficked victims a year to get out of the life. And all services are free. For more information, visit journeyout.org. Well, as you just saw, sex traffickers use social media to solicit the most vulnerable victims. And young people who post photos online can become easy targets. That's why the city attorney's office is hoping to educate them on how important it is to be extra careful about what gets posted on the internet. Gil Reyes has more.
You may be familiar with Snapchat. The popular social media platform allows you to send photos that many believe disappear soon after friends view them. But the reality is, those pictures can be retrieved even by total strangers.
Say I send a Snapchat, there's apps out there that can save the Snapchats.
Teenager Katie Schwartz is among the hundreds of students learning about cybercrime trends at this yearly symposium at the California Endowment. Authorities warn that racy or incriminating photos that you thought had disappeared are increasingly being used to extort money or sex. Katie brought her mom, a prosecuting attorney for the city.
Every year I come, I learn new information that helps me not only with my job, I prosecute crimes against children, but it also helps me as a mom of two teenage daughters.
Despite the dangers, deputy city attorney Laura Drino thinks it's a mistake to ban teenagers from using social media.
The parents that forbid social media, all they're doing is creating a disconnect between themselves and their children. And then their children are creating these accounts behind their backs. I like to talk to my kids about the apps. I ask my kids to show me how to use an app.
Social media is good, but you should always use it responsibly.
Just to watch what you post and like to think about it before you post it.
And as cybertechnology and trends constantly upgrade, so too must education regarding cybercrimes. Bottom line, if you are a parent, being aware and talking to your kids can go a long way in preventing crime. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
This was the symposium's eighth year. Some 400 teachers, parents, and students took part. Well, some of the hottest new vehicles to hit the road in 2017 first made a stop at the LA Convention Center, and there was plenty of pizzazz to rev your engine. Gil Reyes reports from the LA Auto Show.
Let's get the show on the road with some really hot cars. How about Hot Pink? The recently restored Panthermobile is the official car from the 1970's Pink Panther cartoon show. It's one of the crowd pleasers.
The boys love cars, so we decided to stop by.
At the Los Angeles Auto Show at the Convention Center.
The LA Auto Show, we've been around for 109 years, so to see that this is an ongoing popular show, especially here in downtown Los Angeles, is a big deal for us.
More than 50 vehicles debuted, including the world premiere of four Executive Class Porsche Panameras. Expect more horsepower and performance than previous Panameras from Germany.
We sell about one quarter, just under one quarter, of all of our cars in the United States in California. And LA is also a very strong sales region, so it means a lot for us to be well represented here.
Also unveiled for the first time in this or any other galaxy, limited edition Nissan Rogue One SUVs. Only 5,400 were built as promotions for the newest Star Wars movie. For practical driving, industry experts say fuel-efficient SUVs are in, luxury sedans are out. Mercedes, Chevrolet, Volvo, and Nissan also saw world premieres in Los Angeles. And one space was even reserved for something totally unexpected: the Urbi, a lightweight folding electric scooter.
The Urbi helps people take public transportation who currently live perhaps a mile, two miles, or even three miles from the closest MTA or MetroLink stop. The Urbi's approved to go on the MTA and the MetroLink, so we're really proud to be helping people take public transportation and save time and money getting to and from places.
The Urbi tops out at 15 miles per hour and can go 20 miles on a single charge. So what will the near future hold for the LA Auto Show? Autonomous vehicles, maybe? Industry experts have the wheels turning. At the LA Auto Show, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Now, this year's Auto Show also saw the return of the Ride and Drive event. Fans were allowed to take test drives of nearly 100 brands of cars. Well, after four decades, a plan has finally been cemented into place to help fix LA's crumbling sidewalks. Rasha Goel has more.
The sidewalk is unsightly, and it has to be done sometime. It is dangerous for some people.
Vaughn Armstrong, a 33-year resident of the Silver Lake neighborhood, is among the many Angelenos who was happy to hear about the city's new program. City officials recently launched Safe Sidewalks LA, a new $1.4 billion plan to fix the city's buckled and broken sidewalks over the next 30 years.
One of our principal goals here is to ensure accessibility. So where there have been complaints regarding accessibility by our senior and disabled community, we're mapping that right now throughout the city. So where those complaints have been, where they've been heaviest, those will be priority areas.
Angelenos can report their problems on sidewalks.lacity.org or by calling 311.
I would urge everyone to do that, because by having that kind of public participation, our departments will be in a better position to be able to prioritize where you can get the most repair and the most impact early on in the program.
For those Angelenos who are in a hurry to repair their sidewalks and are willing to pay for it, they are eligible for a rebate program in which they can earn up to $2,000 for a residential lot or $4,000 for a commercial lot. Now, this rebate program will be available for three years.
Once they inspect the damage, they'll give an estimate of what the rebate would be based on 50% of what the city's cost to repair it would be. And many times, that rebate may be enough, or nearly enough, to do the entire job by a private contractor.
The program is up and running right now, so if there's something you need to report, Safe Sidewalks LA is just a click away as the city begins making repairs on the most damaged sidewalks. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Again, the website to report any sidewalk issues is sidewalks.lacity.org. Well, managing your money and planning for the future can be challenging, but the city of LA is helping answer your money questions and offer some valuable advice.
Now that I'm actually starting to make more money than I did as a student, I thought it was a really good investment in myself to come out and learn as much as I can.
Katie Robertstead is looking toward her financial future and came to the Central Library for Financial Planning Day, the kickoff for a citywide effort to better educate residents on what it takes to make wise financial decisions.
Often cases, the public has never had an opportunity to meet with a financial planner. There's no strings attached, there's no selling, there's no giving out of business cards. This is pure financial, answering financial questions.
Attendees were given the chance to meet one-on-one with certified financial planners and receive free personalized advice.
He gave us some pretty good advice about, you know, just how to keep our expenses down and how much that we should be saving for a house, you know, how much the down payment should be and things like that.
The workshop also included seminars and a chance to connect with organizations specializing in topics from buying credit, retirement planning, and credit card debt.
Most Americans are between, somewhere between 500 and 799. So you want to be over on this side. So we're gonna let you know how you're gonna do that.
This is only the first of a series of city-sponsored workshops. It joins with an ongoing effort of the Los Angeles Public Library to empower residents with information and skills to create a more prosperous future. Well, you can find out more about the financial planning program by going to lacontroller.org/ready. Well, why not add a little classical music to the holiday mix? Well, that's just what happened at the Midnight Mission as homeless residents got treated to an earful of music. Anna Marcos was there. This guy with his stylish hat would be right at home at the opera. Except this symphonic experience is no opera. It's a musical event meant for homeless residents at Skid Row's Midnight Mission.
This is great music. I tell you, every time I listen to classical music, it reminds me of a fall on a winter time, and it's just music to the soul. It's big, especially during these holidays coming up. I love it.
And the classical virtuosos providing this music to the soul are members of the USC Thornton School of Music.
I'd like to take the opportunity to really share some of this music that really means so much to each of us and that we've kind of devoted our lives to.
They've been extremely interested and excited to play for a population of people that we don't, they don't normally ever get to see.
The passion certainly shows in these chamber ensemble musicians. As for the listeners, well, they come in all types. Some are a little restless, some applaud and salute enthusiastically, and some, well, they've just fallen asleep. But the music is definitely a nice break from holiday stress.
The holiday season can be lonely times if you don't have family, you know, I'm speaking from my own experience, you know, and I know that reaching out and knowing that there's a community here that folks can come and sit down and listen to a little music and just take them away from the mundane and, you know, it can just be a little bit nicer to know that, that we're here.
These guys are getting quite an artistic sampling: solos, quartets, quintets, even some avant-garde performance art.
I will be playing like some solo piece by Stockhausen, which is very modern music, new music, and very theatrical, because it's a lot about facial expressions and emotions that are just more blunt. Yeah, it just links directly to something more deep and more real.
Because a little music added to the holiday routine seems to do a body good. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. The Midnight Mission puts on musical events for residents several times a month. While with Christmas almost here, kids nationwide have sent letters to Santa, hoping for something special under the tree this year. The U.S. Postal Service is helping to make those dreams come true, thanks to some real-life Santa's helpers. Gil Reyes shows us.
So this letter is from Sylvia, and she says, "To dear Father Christmas, here is my wish list. I really want a pair of Ugg boots size five."
The United States Postal Service receives some 30,000 letters addressed to Santa Claus every year, and thousands of them are actually answered through Operation Santa.
This started, if you can believe it, over 100 years ago. 1912, we started Operation Santa, and it's held strong because there's such a charitable feeling in the community.
Postal employees and volunteers read the letters and choose which ones they're able to answer, oftentimes with gifts or gift cards. Many of the notes come from children in need.
Some where their parents have just, one parent has just passed away, some of them being raised by their grandmother, grandmother doesn't have a job. It shows me how fortunate I am, so I just want to pass that on to maybe another kid or someone that's less fortunate than myself.
One volunteer, Patrick Reynolds, is the grandson of tobacco company founder RJ Reynolds. Now an anti-smoking activist following his father's death from lung cancer, Reynolds adopts letters every year. He even founded a website, beaneelf.org, which lists Operation Santa volunteer centers nationwide.
I want to give back, and I want to take care of people less fortunate than myself. And these letters are powerful and moving. This one says, you know, "Dear Santa, this Christmas is gonna be very sad because my dad is gonna lose his job. He's not gonna be able to buy us things because there's gonna be no money." And people out there can make a difference by coming down here, adopting a letter.
Now, it's impossible to read every single letter. That's where you come in. Volunteers are needed to read letters and grant wishes, and you can do that here at the main post office's processing center every Tuesday and Thursday through December 15th. In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Help grant a child's wish this Christmas. Adopt a letter by stopping by the U.S. Postal District Office. That's at 7001 South Central Avenue, Tuesdays and Thursdays through December 15th. Well, a discontinued but popular form of transportation in downtown LA is one step closer to becoming a reality. The holidays are in full swing as folks ice skate to the beat and celebrate the season with song and tradition. All this in City Beat. A proposed streetcar project in downtown Los Angeles is on track after city council signed off on a preferred route for the line and the findings of an environmental impact study. The council approved a 3.8-mile route that loops between the Civic Center, which includes Grand Park, the Convention Center, and the Fashion District in the South Park area. The proposed route is expected to have stops near downtown theaters and shops along Broadway, Grand Central Market, and several hotels. City officials say the project will restore a form of transportation that had been popular in downtown Los Angeles during the early half of the last century. Well, folks got into the rhythm of the holiday season as they hit the Pershing Square skating rink for the first-ever silent dance party. While wearing wireless headphones, skaters were able to choose their own skating soundtrack at this one-of-a-kind Los Angeles event. And by the looks of things, a good time was had by all. Over in Council District 13, the community gathered to help kick off a holiday tradition: the 25th Annual Atwater Village Festival. The event featured local school choirs, Victorian carolers, a visit from Santa, gingerbread housemaking, and characters Elsa and Olaf from Disney's Frozen. Well, it was an opportunity for art and shopping on Historic Museum Row. Rasha Goel has more on an event that recently showcased the talents of LA artists.
Shoppers got a taste of something truly local at this annual Craft and Folk Art Museum Fair in LA's Historic Museum Row. From ceramics, jewelry, textiles, you name it, they were all here.
We have a long tradition here of doing a holiday marketplace. It goes back at least 40 years, and we've kept up that tradition by bringing artisans from the area to come in and sell their wares. It's a way of bringing handmade craft to the public.
Today, we're showcasing LA makers from all over the city. They're bringing in their wares to sell for some holiday shopping.
Local artists got an opportunity to showcase their work, while shoppers got a chance to buy one-of-a-kind pieces.
The fabrics are absolutely beautiful. There was some other work in the back that I really loved, plates with faces on them. It's just, and it's an interesting group of people.
A lot of really interesting art here and craft. I love it. I love seeing, you know, local artists showing off their craft.
The Craft and Folk Art Museum is located on Historic Museum Row and features exhibitions of work that take traditional techniques in new directions. It is described as a place to see and make art.
The Craft and Folk Art Museum's been on Wilshire Boulevard for 50 years. It's a wonderful, small museum where there's always something unexpected. We hope to teach people quite a bit about how to make things themselves and give themselves the pleasure of being able to craft something with their own hands.
Whoever curated these people did a great job because it adheres to the tradition of this museum here in honoring all different types of craft and folk art.
Shoppers say there are so many great artists, they'd like to see this event happen more often, not only around the holidays. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Craft and Folk Art Museum has activities year-round for the entire family. For more information, you can check out cafam.org. Well, here's your chance to visit the North Pole and not have to go very far. A holiday favorite will have you singing in your seat and get up close and personal with a dazzling display of holiday lights. All this in this week's Things to Do. Stroll through an illuminated North Pole Village in front of the historic Battleship Iowa and take advantage of all the holiday excitement. Presented by the Battleship Iowa and Council District 15, enjoy a special evening interactive tour through the decked halls. A special mailbox will be located in the enlisted mess hall where you can write a letter to our troops overseas or send your Christmas wish list to Santa Claus at the North Pole. Food will be available from local food trucks plus other treats. Santa Claus will be available for pictures and Christmas wishes, too. Catch all the fun on December 23rd, 30th, and 31st at the Battleship USS Iowa. The beloved TV classic Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer soars off the screen and onto the stage this holiday season. Come see all of your favorite characters from the special, including Santa and Mrs. Claus, Hermy the Elf, the abdominal snow monster, Clarice, Yukon Cornelius, and of course, Rudolph, as they come to life in Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer the Musical. It's an adventure that teaches us that what makes you different can be what makes you special. Don't miss this wonderful holiday tradition that speaks to the misfits in all of us. See all the magic on December 23rd and 24th at the Dolby Theatre in Hollywood. For more, visit dolbytheater.com. The Valley's version of Candy Cane Lane can be enjoyed from the comfort of your car, but be prepared for traffic as hundreds of residents descend upon the enchanted village of lights. The group of homeowners on the four streets bordered by Oxnard, Martha, Corbin, and Winnetka collectively outdo themselves every year, and cars are drawn like kids to Santa. Visitors are encouraged to dim headlights on the eight-block stretch so that everyone can enjoy the lights. Brace yourself for slow-moving traffic, so slow, in fact, that most cars end up with kids poking their heads through the sunroofs, waving at each other with holiday cheer. The lights can generally be enjoyed through New Year's Eve. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Sergeants, please call the members at and report to the council chambers. I want to thank Bloomingfield Bond. Good morning, good morning. Shh, good morning. Please take your seats. Today is Tuesday, December 13th. I want to welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bond and Buscaino Cedillo, Englander, Herrstasen, Weezer, Corretts, Kokorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretts moves. Mr. Kokorian, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Paul Corretts moves, and Mr. Bloomingfield, seconds, continue.
And today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, if all would please rise, we'll be led in today's flag salute by Mr. David Rue.
Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Rue. Madam Clerk, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue Item 1M to January 10th of 2017, Items 1A and 1O to February 7th, 2017, and Item 2 to March 1st, 2017.
Okay, so with, without objection, that shall be the order? Continue.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed: Items 1B, D, H, I, J, K, L, P, R, W, X, and Y, as the liens have been paid in full.
Okay, so without objection, that shall be the order?
Additionally, the Department also requests that the lien amount on 1AA be reduced to $4,561.02 due to a partial payment.
So ordered. Continue.
Items 1 and 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
There are cards on Item 1.
Let's hold that and prepare to vote on the other items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
Items 4 through 37 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports have been submitted, posted, and circulated for Items 33 and 37.
Okay. Mr. Bonden.
Mr. President, could we hold Item 5 on the desk for a few minutes, please?
Let's hold Item 5. Mr. Rue.
23, please.
23 per Mr. Rue. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Call Number 6 Special, please.
6 for Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Kokorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Number 32 Special, please.
32 for Mr. Kokorian. Members, let us prepare to vote on the remaining, Mr. Englander.
Sorry, 37, please.
37 for Mr. Englander. Okay, now let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Continue. For, per Mr. Buscaino, forthwith on Item 7. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Items 38 through 47 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, we have cards on all items except for 44 and 45.
Okay, let's, go ahead. I'm sorry to cut you off.
And Item 45 should be held on the desk for an amending motion.
Okay, let's hold those items. And what is remaining that we could vote on now?
Item 44.
Well, it's, any concerns where it relates to Item 4? Then, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, that takes us to the closed-session items. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Kokorian, the Chair of Budget and Finance, and seek his counsel on these items. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Finance has considered Item 49 and recommends approval of the City Attorney's recommendation for settlement. That can be done in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Items 48, 50, 51, and 52, Budget and Finance has also heard and recommends approval of the recommendations, but it is probably better to hold those on the desk for closed-session consideration.
Okay, so why don't we vote on the one item that...
49.
And that would be 48, and in the case entitled Rosa Navas versus the City of Los Angeles?
No, 49.
Item 49, in the case entitled Giovanni Ferdinand versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $350,000 in settlement.
Okay, on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, and I've been informed that 53 can be referred back to the Plum Committee. We will hold the other items and deal with them later when we go into closed session. Madam Clerk, continue.
Mr. President, that takes counsel back to items called Special or General Public Comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murphy, Mr. Sean Murphy, please come forward. Sean, you have Items 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, 1G, 1H, 1I, and then you have General Public Comment. So why don't we start off? Let's give him his three minutes. Yes, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, Item 1, I support this item all the way. General Public Comment, I hope everybody has a good holiday.
Now, wait, wait, let's go to General, Madam Clerk, let's give him his minute for General Public Comment.
Yeah, I want to wish all my fans a happy holidays throughout L.A. Thanks, Herb.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Bloomingfield, it's my understanding we can deal with Item 6 now? Go right ahead.
Great, thank you. The motion represents our shared commitment toward creating a greener and more sustainable Los Angeles. I just wanted to highlight this one. It's something that Mr. Weezer and I have been working on for a couple of years, and he and his team in the mayor's office have all dug in, and my team with John Popatch and Martin Schlagader and Hillary Firestone from the mayor's office, to do something to really improve our environment. When I was a member of the California State Assembly, I worked to enact new energy efficiency standards and strengthen and expand mechanisms like PACE to help homes and businesses finance energy upgrades. And for me, as a council member, greening the San Fernando Valley and the city at large is a top priority. And specifically, we've been looking for ways that the city can reduce its own water and energy footprint, and ambitious goals have been set. In August of 2014, the DWP Board adopted a 15% energy efficiency reduction goal by 2020. Mayor Garcetti signed an executive directive this past October to reduce water use by 20% by 2017. But that's a small part of the solution. More than half of the carbon emissions in most U.S. cities come from buildings. In Los Angeles, buildings are responsible for 51%. Furthermore, preliminary analysis by the California Center for Sustainable Communities at UCLA and the City Energy Project shows that half of the city's electricity demands come from just 4% of the buildings. It's a staggering statistic when you think about it. And 2% of the parcels reaches 40% of citywide energy use. That top 4% is represented by many folks who have come today to hear about this. That's why I, along with my colleague, Councilmember Weezer, and the mayor's office, set about convening a stakeholder process to create the City Energy Project. And by working collaboratively with our city's largest consumers of water and energy, we're creating a force multiplier that will reduce Los Angeles's overall energy and water use while saving businesses and taxpayers money. The double green, I like to call it. Green, green energy and green money. The results of these kind of partnerships are proven. And to the stakeholders, we're not just imposing a solution. This is an example of where we are working with the affected parties to collaborate on a positive solution. Similar programs in 10 participating cities are projected to cut up to 7 million tons of carbon emissions annually. The same impact in reducing climate change pollution as taking three to four power plants offline altogether. And saving energy is not just the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do. In addition to savings on power and water bills, investments in energy and water efficiencies increase property values, improve tenant comfort and productivity, and they create green jobs. Additionally, reductions in consumption will decrease stress on the power and water supply systems, allowing the city to recover more quickly from a natural disaster. So it's a triple win, folks. And with our state facing a historic drought, the extreme weather patterns becoming increasingly unpredictable, despite some people who may not believe that there's climate change, the reality that we know here in Los Angeles and in California, these efforts have never been of greater importance. And we can't afford to wait. Together, we represent the change that we need to make. So again, I want to thank Mr. Weezer for working so closely on this and urge a strong "I" vote for a better environment and a smarter policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as we seek to reduce our energy use by 15% by the year 2020, this is, item's going to help us get there in a very significant way. A lot of our policy work around this has been for newer buildings, but this one strikes at the existing stock, which will help us to reduce our energy consumption even more. Councilmember Bloomingfield introduced this idea a while back, and although it took us a while in the city to get it together to move forward, I'm very happy that it's here now. But it was because of Mr. Bloomingfield's, his staff, and working with the mayor's office and my office, we were able to help move this forward. And what I like about this most is that we asked there to be a stakeholder participation in this. People from the business sector and the environmental side got together and talked about what was best to go about this. And the testimony we heard at Plum and the letters of support we received are evidence that the process was certainly a success. This is a model of how we can continue to move forward to support our energy policies while at the same time working with all stakeholders involved. So again, thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, and also thank you to Mr. Corretts for inserting and helping to move this along as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was my honor to second this motion, and the city council has done a lot of good environmental things recently. We've approved dramatic goals to reduce our greenhouse gases. We've passed a zero-waste franchise that will do a lot for climate change and on a host of other environmental fronts. And now we have this program for energy and water efficiency. I think it's great that we are setting an example, I think, for the rest of the country, especially at a time when we have an incoming administration that has a very anti-environmental viewpoint. I hope that many other cities will emulate this action, and I thank Mr. Bloomingfield and Mr. Weezer and the mayor's office for all working together to make this happen. I think we're taking great leadership and look forward to us continuing to do so in the years ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. There are no more speakers on the queue. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Rue, why don't we deal with your item? One second, Mr. Rue. Mr. Corretts?
I just wanted to ask that this item go forthwith.
Okay, without objection. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members, I ask for your "I" vote today to designate Lyndon Bank.
Madam Clerk, Item 23. My bad.
So to designate Lyndon Bank as historic. This is important to me and to my community, and let me explain why. By any objective measure, this building is historic. The staff report fully covers the details. It is designated by Kurt Myers for Bart Lyndon, and Mr. Myers' daughter is here today, and this is important to his legacy and to the legacy left on his city. And if I could ask Mr. Myers' daughter to stand? Oh, she's not around. She's on her way. It's a classic mid-century modern with a folded plate roof and floating concrete staircase. Furthermore, this exact bank is on the cover of Survey LA, the groundbreaking guide of historic structures in Los Angeles compiled by our very own planning department. It was so clear that this building was significant that the developers of 8150 Sunset spent considerable money to include their EIR, a full evaluation of the bank as a potential historical monument, as well as a preservation options such as relocation. Now, colleagues, the only way to ensure that the preservation options will be carefully considered and carried out with diligence and respect is to designate it as historic. For a structure as significantly, objectively significant as this one, we owe it to the preservation community and to the neighbors to have this process of preservation monitored by the cultural heritage staff and commission, rather than just the protections that are within the EIR. This is exactly the kind of care and diligence that the developers agreed to when this project was approved. The previous approval of 8150 project is not before us today and remains intact. And I don't want the community or the developers to have any misunderstanding about this fact. But the designation today will provide additional review and care of this significant structure and the legacy that this architect deserves. So colleagues, I ask you for your "I" vote, and thank you very much.
Okay, so on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay.
And for clarification, that is as amended by Item 23A.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let's, please, let us move on. Mr. City Attorney?
I just want to state for the record that the amending motion had been circulated and posted before the item was considered.
Thank you.
The amending motion had been posted and circulated before the item was considered by council.
Okay, let's go to Mr. Previn, Eric Previn. Okay, Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you get to speak on, and I want you to hear me. Items 39, 42, 43, 46. And then your general pub, 1M, no, 1M's been continued, and then your general public comment. So, Madam Clerk, if you'd give him the three minutes, and again, 39, 42, 43, 46. Yes, sir?
Thank you, sir. Item 39 is a project that's described as the Lux Hotel. I believe it's in CD14. They are being given a variance to do all sorts of cool things up on the roof, including alcohol and festive accoutrement like that. I suppose it's consistent with what we're doing, but I just hope that all of the appropriate safety features are in place, and I don't know whether or not there's any kind of a, you know, public impact on that, but if the neighbors or anyone is going to care about that kind of thing, I assume the hours are correct. But Item number 42 is a very good example of the appropriate deployment of city money. Mr. Price is going to be advertising for a good event, the Jazz Event, he's been a longtime supporter of, and it's a reasonable amount of money. You can sort of see how $5,000 bucks is about appropriate for the banners to bring awareness to a good event. By contrast, in CD13, at Item, I believe it's 43, we have some manscaping going on for $850,000, sorry, landscaping going on for $850,000 in Mr. O'Farrell's district. Now, we have a homelessness crisis, so though I do appreciate it, and it's a great time to get a lot of attention during a campaign, it's the one of a number. Mr. Buscaino in Item Number 15, sorry, in CD15, has an item where in fact, he is rolling out additional rental space. So this is another opportunity where suddenly somebody is getting a great contract from the city during a time when he is running for office. That always worries us out on the non-incumbent trail, but we do appreciate that we are renting more space. We don't really appreciate that because the city should be owning the stuff that we operate and manage wherever possible, or we get into a problem with Jamison, like we have at the county, where there is long-term astonishing gouges, and we all pay because then they come right back through, even though Mr. come right back through, even though Mr. Rue does not take money from developers, he does take money from Jamison, who now has become a developer upsettingly. He works with Mr. Hanky, and the two of them together are lobbying through, believe it or not, three separate lobbying firms, even as we speak. So this is a great concern of the public. Item number 33 is Blue California. This is a group that are really impressive.
Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, not 33, 39, 42, 43, and 46.
I see. I see. How about 31, sir?
Mr. Previn, come on, I'm not going to go back and forth with you.
Okay, well, I mean, have I exhausted the items that you called?
The speaker is no longer speaking to any of the topics.
Okay, so now let's give him his minute for a general public comment. Give him his one minute.
Fair enough. The first 30 seconds of which I want to direct to an item that was previously on the agenda has been continued. It's item 1M. The reason why I want to bring it up is because CD10 is overseeing now the work of CD7 because CD7 has vacated his seat. So here comes some folks from Silmar with a pernicious lean, and nobody comes out to help, and then the guys from Building and Safety continue it before they can come to the mic. Because I always advise people, speak up and tell the council members what is wrong. Then they know. It's called quality assurance, it's called feedback. Now David, or whoever that is over there, is that Westfall? That's Andrew. Someone was supposed to come out but never came out, sir, from your office. Now, I would imagine that's because you're busy in your office. 212 is the rule that says CD10 can't do work of CD7 because he's busy on CD10. Well, now these people are getting hammered for $2,000 for something that's old, for something that was a misunderstanding, and is in Silmar. And I just, it breaks my heart that this body would continue over and over again to ignore the signals that are being sent from the public saying, hey, why are we doing this?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. Items 1B, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 46, 47. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 39 is the Lux Hotel. I like this. There's a consultant fee. The hotel is paying the city a consultant fee. Consultants are supposed to get paid by the city. Or is this Lux Hotel money a bribe? And if the Lux Hotel gets built in this neighborhood, you're not going to be able to get to work. 39, and then it comes 40. 40 is civilian, I like the word civilian. That means a non-politician, Board of Rights panel, disciplinary matters involving LAPD. Well, you know, either way, if they're non-cops, you can't trust them, and if they're cops, you can't trust them. Although, again, your police force here is better than the shit that they have in Oakland. Total, total shit, killing 36 people in a fire. Number 41, this concerns special elections consolidated with the November 8th, general election. You're trying to cover up the regular city elections. The whole point of holding them separately is so you can have more publicity on the races. But you want to put every, throw the whole damn thing up against the wall and just let it slide down. 41, excuse me, 42. Okay, this concerns the street banners for the Jazz Festival. The Central Avenue Jazz Festival is one of the great, great events in Southern California or in all of California. What happens is people from that neighborhood, mostly African-Americans, who have moved out over the past 30 or 40 years, come back for that weekend, and there is homecoming. I mean, it's a lot more than a Jazz Festival. And if you've been there, you'll see people crying who haven't seen people, others, neighbors who moved away 10 or 20 years ago. Again, when you do a good job, I am the first to congratulate you. And you're doing certainly a great job with the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, which goes back to Mayor Bradley. Number 42, and then number 46. And number 46 is Robertson Boulevard, holiday season, suitable measure for free parking. Okay, and then final maps, where you get a surprise and find out that they changed the zoning in your neighborhood, and now they can build a high-rise. And if you're a Jew, you might think it's not going to happen to you, but they've used up all the neighborhoods in the black and Hispanic neighborhoods next to Jews.
Let's give him his minute for general public comment.
My one minute is for Jimmy Gomez. You know, I got up here and offered the job to Mr. Sadio. Had he accepted it, he'd be in Congress by now. But he didn't accept the war, the invitation. Jimmy Gomez did. He's Mr. Climate Change. And then big, big Mr. Perez, you know, like that, you've seen the picture of me pointing to him, Perez decided to run, but he got a stomach ache and had to leave the race. The stomach ache was our website that said anybody but him, Perez. So Jimmy Gomez is your next congressman to replace Javier Becerra. He's great on climate change. Vote for Jimmy Gomez. Go to our website, check it out, or check out the tweet, Jimmy Gomez is the winner. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, let us, Madam Clerk, let's vote on items 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 46, and 47. Mr. Price?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a slight addition to item 42. Correction, I should say, that is not for the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, but it is for the Vermont Avenue Business Corridor.
Thank you.
Correction, thank you.
Let's vote on these items. Let's open the roll.
And excuse me, Mr. President. On item 40, there is an amending motion that has been posted and circulated.
Thank you. So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Bonin.
We approved item 33 earlier. Could we send that forthwith, please?
Let's take up item 1D. And I have a, is it Ms. Fuentes? Ms. Fuentes on item 1D? Anybody put in a card or a request to speak on item 1?
And, Mr. President, as the council considers item 1, there are requests to continue 1N to January 10th and 1Q to February 10th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Again, Ms. Fuentes, Lisa Andro Fuentes. Okay, let's prepare then to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Bonin, item 5?
Yes, my questions have been answered. Recommend approval of that.
Okay, so now let's vote. Madam Clerk, on item 5, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate. I've been told we need a motion.
My screen's not working.
Mr. Englander's screen has a, we have a technical glitch.
I asked him to check this out a couple weeks ago. I don't know that anybody ever has, but constantly have problems with it, so I'm not sure.
And on item 37, the committee report was submitted without recommendation. A motion is required to move a recommendation on the matter.
We don't have the manual ones anymore.
Did you want to?
No vote.
Mr. Krikorian?
This is what we did yesterday. So I will go ahead and move the recommendation of the, myself and one member of the Budget and Finance Committee, as stated in the report, and ask for an "I" vote.
Okay, I'll second that. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Krikorian, did you want to deal with item 32? I believe item 32.
Do we have it circulated yet? We're in the process of circulating an amendment, Mr. President, so if we could hold that on the desk for a moment?
And we will do that. So it's my understanding that we have circulated an amendment on item 45. So we can go to item 45 at this time. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Okay, what I'm going to do at this point, members, is I'm going to ask the sergeants if they would please clear the chambers so that we can go into closed session. We have about four items we need to address in closed session. So sergeants, if you would please clear the council chambers so that we can move into closed session. So sergeants, if you would please clear the council chambers so that we can move into closed session.
[music]
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 Okay, we're back in open session. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to review the items that were discussed.
Item 48 in the case entitled Rosa Novas versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend 2.5 million in settlement.
Okay, you want to vote on these individually, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, please.
Okay, so on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
In item 50 in the cases entitled Sharon Camproni versus the City of Los Angeles, in the District, U.S. District Court and in the L.A. Superior Court.
One second, Mr. Englander.
You wanted to do a little more.
Let's, um...
Please, I can't hear you.
I recommend that we reconsider 48.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration of item 48. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. So that item is now before us. You're suggesting that we split this issue, we bifurcate the issue.
So the first, let's vote on the settlement amount.
Let's voting, we're voting on the settlement now. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now the second part of the vote, Mr. City Attorney.
Is regarding the intent to issue judgment obligation bonds to interfinance the...
That item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, one no.
Let's go to the next item.
And that would be item 50 in the cases entitled Sharon Camproni versus the city. There's a recommendation to expend 4 million in settlement of both these cases.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, City Attorney, are we splitting these as well?
Same procedure, yes.
All right, so let's, on part one, let's, the settlement, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Now we'll vote, Mr., now we'll vote on the second part. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, one no.
Okay, next, Mr. Wezar.
Can we send item 27 forthwith, please?
Without objection, 27 is sent forthwith. Yes. Next item.
Item 51 in the case entitled JLD versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $1,650,000 in settlement.
City Attorney, you wanted to speak to that?
Again, I recommend we split it. First, we vote on the settlement amount and then the intent of the city council to finance the judgment with judgment.
So now we're voting on the settlement amount. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Now we're basically voting on how we might pay for it.
Correct.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, one no.
Okay, that brings us where?
That brings us to item 52, which are the cases entitled Charles Williams versus the city, where there is a recommendation to expend $130,000 in settlement.
Okay, on this one, it's just one vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, what's before this body?
That brings the council to item 32.
Item 32?
Yeah.
It's my understa-, well, yes, Mr. City Attorney?
So, just to make it clear, so the city has found that the settlements for Novas, Camprone, and JLD versus the city, it intends to, it's in the best interest of the city, and the city intends to make an interim fund borrowing or advance from the reserve fund to pay the settlements on an interim basis, which loans or advances will be refunded or reimbursed with the proceeds of judgment obligation bond issue. A resolution regarding such intent has been considered, adopted. Issuance of the judgment obligation bonds themselves will require further council approval and will be considered in open session by council at a later date.
Thank you for that clarification. So now we go to item 32, and it's my understanding that the amendment has been circulated. So we can just prepare to, Mr. Englander?
For a second, I want to thank Mr. Krikorian for the amendment. I think it was really well thought out, and I like this, so.
Okay, let's show him how much you like it by voting for it. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, what is before this council?
There is a special one motion that has been posted and circulated.
Okay, Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This morning, I'm exercising my right as per Rule 23 to introduce and vote on a... This morning, I'm exercising my right as per Rule 23 to introduce and vote on a motion since the issue just came to the City's attention. For those of you who haven't been following the issue, the former Westwood Horizons facility in Westwood has been sold to a company called Watermark, and Watermark has issued a holiday eviction to over 150 senior citizens who, according to the eviction notice, would have to leave by April and be out on the street. There is a possibility, in fact, a likelihood, that most of them would be extended until December 2017. That's based on them having filed the proper forms. Some of the folks in this facility suffer from some level of dementia. Some of them can't read well enough to even read the notices, and many of them don't have family that can help them with this. So this is absolutely the most reprehensible and disgusting step I've ever seen by a corporation, and it's potentially, as far as I know, the largest mass eviction of senior citizens probably in the history of the whole country. We believe there are a number of issues to this, and these are folks, by the way, that are some Holocaust survivors, World War II veterans, folks that are over 100 years old and would be out on the street. This is really just the most disgusting thing. Under the Ellis Act, it's, I believe, an unclear issue whether they can Ellis them out because they would then remodel the facility and bring in a different group of senior citizens with a slightly different group of needs, but still, they would be kicking out seniors and bringing in new seniors. So it's a very open legal question. Also, there's a planning question as well because under the previous corporation, remodeling in a phased manner so nobody would have to get kicked out, but they would do it floor by floor, was approved, and they're trying to use an approval that wouldn't have evicted anyone to do a remodel completely differently by evicting everyone. So there are a number of open legal questions. I think everybody recognizes this is just a greedy corporation that appears to have a primary motivation of getting out from under the rent stabilization ordinance and bringing in senior citizens that can pay more than the folks that are there now. So we are asking the Planning Department, Building and Safety, Housing, Community Investment Department, and the City Attorney's Office to all look at what our options are, to put a halt to this. We're also going to engage in a campaign to embarrass them as well, but we hope that by legal means, we can put an end to this more quickly. And so I would ask for your aye vote to help us avoid the eviction of hundreds of senior citizens in the most reprehensible manner possible.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
We should take two votes. The first is on the findings.
Okay, let's first vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, Mr. City Attorney?
And then we have a vote on the substance.
Now we're voting on the substance of the motion. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Madam Clerk, that bring... Mr. Corretts?
I don't know, I don't know whether it's required or not, but if it is required, we should send this forthwith as well.
Without objection. Madam Clerk, what is before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred. Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just before we conclude, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that we've been joined by some exceptional eighth grade students from the Oakwood School in my district who are here with our teacher, Matt Fagan, so if they could just stand and be acknowledged. As you know, Oakwood is one of the finest schools in the San Fernando Valley and all of Los Angeles, and we're very pleased to have them here and joining us today.
Thank you. So that brings us where? Announcements? Mr. Corretts, please. Announcements?
If I can, as President, tomorrow, the L.A. Kings Battleship Iowa Ice Skating Rink. Teachers throughout the city, throughout this region, would be able to skate free from 5:00 to 9:00. So all of our teacher friends out there, come down to the L.A. waterfront Battleship Iowa, along with the L.A. Kings, you'll be able to ice skate on the battleship. And the Battleship Iowa and the ice skating rink will be open till January 8th, but tomorrow, we're going to recognize and thank all of our teachers for their service to our students throughout the city in partnership with Dr. Vladovic, our local school board member. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Any business remaining before us?
That completes...
If not, let's all rise for motions to adjourn in the memory of people who have passed. If we could begin on my right, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, today I rise to adjourn in memory of Dr. David Rogers. He was a pediatrician and a medical geneticist. He was a graduate of Stanford University and Howard Medical School, completed his specialty training at L.A. County Harbor UCLA Medical Center. He was a celebrated member of the Stanford Black Alumni Association. In 1986, he experienced a devastating car accident and became a quadriplegic. Despite this, he continued to serve the City of Los Angeles, commuting to work every day for 30 years as a doctor counseling patients and their families until his most recent hospitalization. David is remembered by all in his large family for his cheerfulness and engagement in the face of what many thought would be overwhelming adversity. His perseverance was remarkable. He never expressed bitterness about his injury despite clearly suffering from pain and discomfort on a constant basis. He was a L.A. Laker season ticket holder for over 30 years and regularly attended jazz concerts at the Hollywood Bowl. David's legacy is an enormous inspiration to everyone, particularly for young people who aspire to careers of service. He will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Anyone else to my right? Anyone to my left? If not, we are adjourned.